Councilmember Brooke?
Present.
Councilmember McCollum?
Here.
Councilmember Deed?
Present.
Councilmember Kidd?
Here.
Councilmember Wenning? Manager McKean?
Here.
Mr. Ray Gorman?
Here. No excuse, Mayor Julian and and Congressman. I'll say that for the third time today. In this meeting, we've decided that the council members have an excuse for this. Does the seat close in favor of the members?
Aye.
So I invite Sheriff Keen, Councilmember Sheriff Keen, to offer the ENS and the consent agents.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In his right understanding, again, that there are no qualifications or certain matters, I'm sorry, I understand there are no certain matters qualifications of their own. So with that said, we will begin first the public comment. I have only one name here, and that is Elise Kaelin, and please, if you'd like to, may I ask you?
I thought Elise Kaelin was being prepared. Okay. Go ahead. Oh, now, oh yeah, that works. Elise Kaelin prepared with an insulin future. Fluoridation advocates must show a significant benefit from water fluoridation to them. Adverse information from Cloud County Smile Surveys for 2005 and 2010 is capable of revealing lack of fluoridation efficacy. Tonight, I offer part of our evidence that analysis and publication of the Smile Survey information shows strong fluoridation bias, that available essential knowledge is hidden, that the council and the community have been voluntarily deprived of essential genetic information. Exhibit one, you have before you, exhibit one is one which you have one page of it, the entire Smile Survey 2010 has been filed on your email and through your secretary. This, this particular Smile Survey and its predecessor, the Survey of 2005, omit numbers of children and their schools. Cloud kids were lumped into a single group. Only one chart addresses carry experience, meaning present carries and past history in third graders. The bar graphs of this chart give only percentages for an unknown number of children. An unsophisticated reader of this chart could easily conclude that dental decay decreases from 2005 to 2010. And the fact that second graders were added to third graders only for year 2005 invalidates such a conclusion. Is this a gross mistake in graphic presentation or evidence of deception? Contrast the 2010 report to exhibit two, Appendix C, Cloud County Smile Survey. This is exhibit two now. Our oral, this is oral health indicators by elementary school. Here, we have real numbers. They name schools and show carries experience in 76.1 percent of fluoridated kids compared to from 53 to 66 percent of those in Port Angeles not then fluoridated. Squim students had least cavities, ran from 53.6 to 61.8. Data to look for dental fluorosis in the 2010 report is another big mistake. This exclusion is inaccessible. This is not an arcane art to find out dental fluorosis. There are clear guidelines. The nationwide epidemic of dental fluorosis was reported in year 2007. Exhibit three, the three pages from 1995 statewide survey from the University of Washington. The only squin schools in it was squin's Gray Wolf and PA's Jefferson Schools. This study credited fluoridation with a benefit of a statistically insignificant 0.65 of 1 to surface, about 127 surfaces available. My public disclosure request was started last December. Cloud County Health and Human Services Public Health Program Manager Christina Hurst was unable to provide details, not even who schools were sampled. She told me that data was on a thumb drive held by Dr. Tom Locke, and she would have to ask him for the data. No luck. Weeks passed. Dr. Locke left his position. Finally, this is first, told me the state health department had the thumb drive and issued contact. State Health Public Records Coordinator Jennifer Morrison confirmed that they had the thumb drive, but refused to disclose the contents because it had been given them, quote, "for safekeeping," unquote. Furthermore, although state funding was provided at Cloud County, the county has chosen to conduct its own survey and hire its own dental examiner. Therefore, the testing results are neither the property or responsibility of the state, and they do not appear in state totals. A series of public disclosure searches retrieved key information, and now we come to exhibit four. This is an email to Christina Hurst from Town Lock. Elementary 2010, cloud.idv is a locked Microsoft Access database file. I don't know who created it, probably the state, or the Washington Dental Services Foundation, which did some of the data analysis. It can only be opened by the creator. I don't have the access key. There is probably a way we can reformat, but we need to have a valid reason to spend the time. If the only reason we are doing it is to comply with Elise Kaelin's data request, that is not a sufficient reason. Public disclosure laws do not require us to manipulate, reformat, or analyze database files. The documents I submitted of the entirety of our records on the 2010 Smile Survey, that is all we can give. Cloud County's role in this was to hire a dental hygienist to do the exams and to use staff time to code. My three minutes is up. There's more to tell. I have more documents, and we'll have to wait for every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, say your name, your address.
Here?
Yes.
My name is Susan Krebsner, and I live at 1311 East Lordson Boulevard, and I've been trying to work a water leak at Crestwood Nursing Facilities. I was called by one of your staff, one of the city staff, sat in and told that the water leak was fixed, and on the way down, I checked it, and there is still water running down the street. That's an issue I'll probably deal with later. Right now, I'd like you guys to fix the city hotline. The leak hotline just rings and rings and rings, doesn't even allow you to leave a message. So please, can you fix the hotline? I talked to the city about three weeks ago and told them, they said, "Yeah, we'll work on it." Nobody can report a leak at this point in time, and being around a Phase III water shortage, we need to be able to at least report a leak. So please, please, please fix the phone system so somebody can report a leak. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Okay, seeing none, I would also later note for you all that we have included now in regular schedule is a second public comment period later in the meeting. We have scheduled two public hearings that we notify people that they are to begin as near to 6:30 as late as we can do that. We have a little bit of time here, so perhaps?
We have the consent agenda.
Oh, and where should I go here to?
The mayor and council.
So we might have a little bit of chance to catch up with some other party agenda.
We do have somebody from out of town that is here, a representative from Olympic Ambulance, and I know that probably in the amount of time that we got for our public hearings, I mean, they probably catch that one and will all go back home at a reasonable time. So if you could move I-3 high up at this time, and now the fire should make the internet one.
I'd be happy to do that. So as council members, I-3, ambulance, Olympic ambulance, that's right, let's move that. Okay.
Thank you, council. You may remember that several months ago, Bill Wilson approached the council with an issue that he had with ambulance filling and the fact that there was some confusion about the ambulance filling system here in the city. And at that time, council directed me to provide an overview of how ambulance filling is done here in the city, which we did. And at the end of that overview, council then directed staff to see if we could look into a way to work out an agreement that could eliminate that confusion. So in order to do that, excuse me, City Manager McKean and I met with representatives from Olympic Ambulance several times to talk about the issue, explore different ways that we might build some sort of an agreement that would address that issue, and in fact, we have done that. And it was an incredible opportunity for us to work real closely with Olympic Ambulance representatives. We've worked with them for decades. They run out operationally. In this day, it's an opportunity to look at the agreement that we've had, find ways that we could work together better in order to eliminate the filling confusion that has existed. So we tonight have presented an amended agreement through your approval. That agreement does a number of different things. Number one, it ensures that citizens in Port Angeles will receive really seamless emergency medical services response. It'll provide for billing equity within the city, so that doesn't matter who or which agency transfers someone to the hospital. A citizen in Port Angeles who pays in the medical utility will not seek any other pocket expenses. And it also cleans up a number of different issues that we've had in the agreement over the years, so it makes the agreement a lot better. And finally, it also provides some service standard delivery measures for Olympic Ambulance as well. So we're very happy. It's a great public-private partnership agreement that we've come up with. Very happy with the agreement. It's going to work real well. I think it's a very good thing for the citizens. And tonight, Kim Crawford, who is the executive director of Olympic Ambulance, has come up from Birmingham. She'd be happy to talk to you a little bit about the agreement and answer any questions she may have.
Yes, thank you for putting me in front of the agenda.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I just have a brief statement, and like Chief de Buke said, I am available to answer any questions that you have. So I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to commend you on the EMS system that you have in place. I've worked in EMS management for over 20 years and have been involved in many different systems. The MedOne utility is really unique in that by everyone paying the little and billing associated insurance companies, it creates an affordable system that takes care of everyone, regardless of their ability to pay. Working with Chief de Buke and Manager McKean has been a pleasure, and I don't think, I think if it weren't for the trust that the three of us have with each other, that we wouldn't have been able to get to where we are today. It was really a unique opportunity for Olympic Ambulance to sit down and share proprietary information to try and come up with a solution. One of the things that was revealed during our discussions is that the amount of money that we are actually talking about is minimal in comparison to the confusion that it's created over the years. So I thank you for your consideration, and as I said, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Senator Mr. Wilson, yes, here.
I would like to thank Olympic Ambulance Service for their cooperation. This is a big step ahead for the people of our community. It's been a ongoing problem over the years, and I really appreciate you working with us, sharing proprietary information, and working with our fire chief so that we can offer this far better accommodation for our citizens, especially at their most vulnerable time of stress and the time of need, we didn't need the extra financial stress. So thank you very much. We really appreciate your cooperation.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
All right. Well, I would also like to thank Olympic Ambulance for working on this. I think we've refined something that's pretty special, and hopefully it will continue to serve as a model for other people to look at as well. I don't believe that any one unit is an ambulance. I think it's an emergency medical vehicle rather than an ambulance, and that has always been a confusion in our community. And I think that this relationship will make it easier not to be confused by what's an ambulance and what's an emergency medical vehicle. So thank you.
Agreed. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions just too, because I think this is wonderful. I think this is wonderful for everyone, but how overall does this affect your budget? You know, because I know this was one of those things that.
It actually has minimal, if any, implication to our budget at all, because these are transfers that would have been done by Olympic Ambulance anyway for the agreement. Olympic Ambulance transfers all its support patients anyway, so they would have paid, they would have not been transferred, so we would have been accomplished.
Great. Thank you. Again, thank you for working together so well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I think it's a great example of, you know, we get complacent sometimes with how our operations are run, go over and around past history, past years, and it's good that citizens have an opportunity to kind of give some ideas and point out some suggestions and stuff. And so I commend our citizen in the front row for helping with that. And so I know there's a catalyst in this case, got communication going, and hats off to the staff and to Olympic Ambulance for being really open-minded and sitting down and getting something that was pretty much broken. So thank you.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to authorize the city manager to sign the attached agreement with Olympic Ambulance Incorporated for the provision of EMS services within the city of Port Angeles.
Wait a second there. Okay, the motion is made, seconded. Who's in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? And I just coincidentally, I just before I left the house, Saturday night, saw a quote and something I cut out from an article the other day in Heskey. It went something like, "The only way good things come out is when people learn to tell what you got."
Very nice.
This is a perfect example.
I agree. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you for coming up.
Okay.
You say aye.
All right. Goodbye.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would just comment that the real winters are citizens. Okay. Again, I have trouble seeing, is it not quite 6:30?
Five minutes.
Okay, let's go back to the consent agenda.
Some emails, some items.
Oh, okay, sorry. Do we have any lead item? Show your agenda.
Yes, I have a lead item for a future agenda item. We received an email from Port Commission Mayor Calhoun requesting a joint meeting between the Port Commission and the City Council, and I hope that we should work to arrange that.
Wonderful.
Could I agree with you?
And I thought that there was another lead item. Is that the UAC's, is that that you're not referring on the enrollment agreement, or is that not?
Yes, we can bring that forward tonight. Phil is here to go over that item.
We have a little bit of time with the consent agenda. Is there anybody?
I would suggest on the one that much for the UAC as a council, due to the dollar amount that we have to the consent agenda, have you read into the consent agenda?
So you're talking about the.
Inter knock referral and referral fee agreement.
There's a separate council member.
Which, again, the other?
Separate council member.
Yeah, that's the one.
Oh, I don't know if we did that wrong.
There's the inter knock referral and all the fee agreement that was discussed at the special counsel UAC meeting prior to the.
It was a separate process.
Oh, okay. One video.
So perhaps I could be out of the side of E6?
Yes. I have noticed a script error on page E3 of the minutes. It was moved by Collins and seconded by Gates to set public hearing on fluoridation for March 2016. Should the date be? March 2016, I have a wait. Was our first recommendation. These are the minutes of July 21, 2015, so we've been hard to submit back to March. All right, hearing none, we would exclude, so I will, let's, I will read the consent agenda as amended here. City council meetings as amended, July 21, July 28, 2015. Finisher approval list gaining from July 25, 2015, to August 7, 2015. You have under $3,248,195.32. Bevody Street pavement repairs contract ST-14-023, final acceptance. Leasewater treatment plan, secondary moving replacement. Opportunity fund grant acceptance and memorandum of understanding. And E6, inter knock referral and enrollment fee agreement.
The motion that the consent agenda is approved is read?
Second.
We moved in seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Who's in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. So with that, we are just about at the time, so we will, we have two public hearings this evening. First being the surplus Morse Creek hydroelectric project and property, and then we'll be conducting a public hearing on this matter regarding the subject, the surplus project and property. So who is going to use?
Just want to just work the ESN.
As I have already.
Counsel, we've been discussing the Morse Creek Hydro Project for, after several years now, and so you know the history that the Hydro Project is no longer operational. It would be extremely expensive to fix it and not in the financial interest of the, of the city to fix it and operate it at our low rates that we get from EPA. So we're proposing, it's been endorsed by the UAC, is to surplus the, the properties associated with the Hydro Project, and we'll just give a quick map of the properties in question here. So these are the properties, properties just outside the city. We have the hydro generator, and this is the city on Morse Creek, with these properties surrounding it, the city owns. You have the dam which collects the water off of Morse Creek, sending it down the pipeline to the generator. This used to be the Morse Creek Water Line, which brought it to the city decades ago. Now it just brings water to that generating plant. These are the properties associated with the, with the dam. We have some, some larger close-ups built next slide.
Looks a little upside down now.
That was gifted to the city, I think for probably $10, I believe, for the real estate swap, and it was for water, watershed management, because this was, this was the, our water supply to the city, and so the city started buying up and accumulating. Some of this was given to the city, some of it was cost $10 for the property to protect the watershed where we were getting our drinking water. So we accumulated these over time. This was one of the properties that was the city accumulated. So these, the properties around the dam, upon sale of timber or real estate or whatever is in the best financial interest for the city, that funding would go to the water utility that they're associated with, with the dam. Next slide. These properties were accumulated and are associated with the hydro generator plant, so any sale of the properties or timber or any kind of financial arrangement, the financial, the funding for these properties would go to the electric utility. That's the last slide we have. So we've, we've reviewed, the Hydro Project is not in the best financial interest of the city to repair it and operate it. The, the real estate and the infrastructure with the Hydro Project are no longer be any current or predicted city requirements. It cannot be and now will use in any city program or operation. So with our recommendation to move forward with surplusing of these properties. Now, one of the questions is, and I want to clarify, in the resolution that was put forward is, I know to any proposal to sell, transfer, or dispossess of the property or any part of it, will be presented to City Council for approval at a later date. So at this point, we're not discussing how we're going to dispose it. We're just declaring that it is surplus to the city needs.
Any questions, Senator, before we open the room here?
So once we declare this surplus, or if we declare this surplus, what does that do for the city? Why, I guess since we don't have a buyer, we don't know how much it's worth necessarily, what does this surplus status mean?
It allows us to move forward with, we've been developing a request or proposal to interested parties, and we'll be looking at rating, how we would rate any proposals that come in based on minimizing risk to the city and increasing financial windfall or financial impact to the city. And so it could be timber sales, it could be real estate sales. If someone has a project that actually operates the Hydro Project and is financially beneficial to the city, that could be an option, but it's, we're not defining how a, what is the, what is the greatest financial benefit to the city.
But do we have a knowledge of what that land is worth, especially, you know, how much timber could be there that is worth, or do we have that knowledge?
Craig gave a very good answer to your question, but a shorter, tippler answer is, this process is required by state law before we can do anything else to the property.
So this process requires what?
State law requirement. This was utility property. Okay. State law requires that we go through a hearing process to declare the property surplus to the needs of the city, and that must be done before we can take any other action with regard to the property.
Okay. I guess certainly what I did yet is, we don't currently know the worth of this piece of property. I know it's not worthwhile for us as a utility, so.
We do have, we have, several months ago, we did have a real estate appraisal done on all these properties and include a timber crew, so we do know the, the boundaries of what it could be used for based on county ordinances and, and timber. And, you know, since it was last.
I guess certainly what I did get is, we don't currently know the worth of this piece of property. I know it's not worthwhile for us as a utility, so...
We do have, we have, several months ago, we did have a, a real estate appraisal done on all these properties and include a timber cruise. So we do know the, the boundaries of what it could be used for based on county ordinances and, and timber. And, you know, since it was last, I think it was six months ago or more, you know, timber prices have changed, so that has to be factored in. But we do have an appraisal in a timber cruise.
Okay, great. That, that was mine. I'll give it to him. Thank you.
I would suggest any discussion of that be an executive session as a part of sale property concept. The other thing is, this was, this has been in the city's review for a long time, perhaps ten years ago or more. And one of the issues was decommissioning of the dam. And I'm not sure that issue's been totally reviewed at this point.
I think one of the points the council, some of the council members ran resident is maintaining water rights on Morse Creek. I'm sure the P U D currently pulls water off our dam. They have a water plant right there, so they, they're currently pulling water off of Morse Creek from our dam into their plant and then sending out to the, you have her fairview area. So they would like this to continue operation. And they might interest in buying this property or the infrastructure. And I've had to let them know that, you know, if this is surplus, we will be going out with our F A that they could make a proposal.
And would the land be surplus in parcels, or, I mean, like, say, if someone's just interested in buying part of it rather than the whole thing, is that...
More likely, uh, it'll be several, probably several agreements. There might be people interested in this for whatever reason, and other people interested in these, these parts. So it, it will not be a simple solution by any means.
And by the, what's the total acreage? Eight hundred and ninety. Roughly eight hundred and ninety acres.
And because it's Morse Creek, you know, wherever, some of these are very steep ravines, unusable. Some of these are, would be great for a little cabin if you wanted to get a cabin up here. Some of them are very, this is Deer Park Road through here, so that will give you an idea of what kind of topography. It's fairly flat here, but then as you get to the Morse Creek, it does get fairly steep. And then there are access issues, I think, whether there are some access issues into this property.
Anyway, just comment, source of counsel, being on the real estate committee, we've got reviews this for, been on, probably close to a year, something like that, over time. Numerous occasions, trying to look at all the pluses and minuses that committee felt it was appropriate to send to the council for declaring surplus.
Have we had conversations with other entities, you know, or, I don't know whether in the, or other departments they want this, the school board, for potential other uses?
If we go out with an R F P, a fresh proposal, any organization or entity or person could put in a proposal, and we look at the, the least risk and highest financial benefit to the city when we evaluate.
And I guess in that evaluation, least risk makes sense, most financial one does to some extent, depending on what, you know, the benefit may be, a different benefit than financial as well.
That, that's correct. One of the difficulties is, is that these are property of the enterprise or of each specific utility. And so, in order to do that, you have to show the benefit to that particular utility. Unlike things that are part of our general fund, for instance, we have a lot more flexibility. So, but what Craig was talking about was that we need to make sure that we maximize to a certain degree where we require to maximize the financial value to the benefit of that enterprise because they are the property of that enterprise or that utility.
Okay, thank you.
So for clarification then, just a question, if the property is declared surplus and it ultimately is sold, the proceeds of that sale would have to go to those utility enterprises for whatever is deemed the most appropriate use?
Right. And the sale of these properties or timber would go to the water utility, and these properties would go to the electric utility.
Which might bring rates down more, perhaps?
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? All right, we will open up the public hearing. All of any of you that would just make a comment on this matter, please use the public station name and your address.
Good afternoon, I'm Neil Wilson, P O Box eight one seven, Port Angeles. Ladies and gentlemen of the council and the state staff, I would urge you to, whatever you can, to hang on to whatever water rights we have in this, this impound. There's no saying you don't miss your water until the well runs dry. And if you check the Elwha River lately, it is said this story blows, and this is part of the new normal. And I would certainly hate to see the city give up any access to any water that we may have. I know that the city is in need of funds, I'm quite sure that the utilities are, but we're going to be in need of water for quite some time, I'm afraid. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to make a comment? Anybody else who'd like to just make a comment on this matter? If you want to do that at the same time. Anybody else who'd wish to have this opportunity, give this public hearing to comment on this Okay, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing. There was a council, but it would be your pleasure.
Do you have to read the resolution? Fastly attached resolution declaring Morse Creek.
Let me read, let me read for the artic. Resolution of the city council of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, declaring the access to property, surplus property, and authorizing disposal of the sale.
Okay, I'll read that, Mr. Redd.
A second.
Can I just have one final question? Sorry. If we pass this and make this surplus, and then later on, we get a bid or something, and something makes us realize, hey, maybe we should really hang on to this again, can you reverse this? Okay.
Yes. So, let me ask a question, if I can, Craig? If this were in our hand of authority today, and we actually had use of this facility, and given Mr. Wilson's and other comments, say, well, gosh, we, we could, we could get any of the water, all of the water we could, we could get, would you, could you give us an idea of how, I mean, would this have made a constitutional difference, just how it flowed the water, that, how we, as you call it, usage of this, usefulness to our total, total volume of resources is quite low? Is that right?
For the, the water right, how we would impact the city at this point? The, you know, water rights have a value that, that, to the city. One of the issues using that water right, and we would have to discuss with Department of Ecology, they, in discussions during this drought, they, the water right that they put in place on Morse Creek, when we built the rainy well, was that it was in place in case there was a failure of the rainy well. So, when the P U D asked Department of Ecology if they could utilize our water right during the drought, because at, at a certain flow level, they must cease pouring water from Morse Creek. But we have the ability to use our water right, and they're asking Department of Ecology could allow them to use our water right. They were hesitant and focused back on when they gave the water right during construction of the rainy well for it to be used if the rainy well failed for any reason. I think that there are probably still discussions that could be had with Department of Ecology to assist P U D, and they do support some of our, well, we, we are providing water to P U D through, from the Elwha River. And if, if, if there's some legal questions, we have to work through with Department of Ecology. Ultimately, they're going to dictate how we use it, but I would say maintain the water right for the city at this point. And I, you'd agree, but, but we could probably do the sale of property, but structure the sale that we do maintain the water right at that dam, and that's the way we will proceed.
Yes, we can separately retain the water right if this, we can do that.
Do you call it, and then, and this? I'm going to speak against the motion. My feeling is that this is a difficult discussion to have without an executive session. Mr. Lord, sale of property is the subject for executive session, is that not correct?
That is correct.
And I would feel more comfortable before we act on this, and I don't think there's any urgency in acting on this, that we have an executive session and we discuss some of these issues that would affect this sale of the property. And I think there are more issues than the council has heard tonight, so. So I, I'm going to go against the motion if it continues, but I really would like to move to table the motion until, after an executive session. And I think my motion to table this precedent should be acted on first.
I concur with Councilmember Collins. As, as mayor, you, you deal with issues as they come up, and one of the issues I had to deal with was the deconstruction of the dam and the unknown factor of the mud coming down. And we had clogging up in the treatment plant, and we really didn't know how it was affecting our, our rainy well. And our job is, is so important that we provide water to the community without question. And I know the Real Estate Committee has worked on this for a long time, and I respect the work of the Real Estate Committee, and I thank you for that. I, I just am not ready to give up any water right. This, we've had some extraordinary weather along the west coast, and I'm, I'm just not fully convinced that we need to sell that and our water rights right now. I really agree with Councilmember Collins, I, I do need that information.
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor? I'm not sure a motion to table is debatable or discussed, so, but it wasn't my intention to be contrary to the main motion. It was just simply to give us some time and not going to discuss this properly. So I'd rather we took a vote on the motion to table.
I would agree, if folks need more information, I would always appreciate it. Get more information.
So we have a motion?
Are we allowed to comment on that motion before we vote? Okay, so, and, and I, I agree a hundred percent that there's a large, long, long review list of very, very important details to enter into and discuss if and when we ever get to a point of talking about a sale, which personally I think retaining all the water rights would be one of those very important topics. However, it would not make, I don't think, a lot of sense to go down that path and do a lot of that work if it's not going to be considered surplus property. And I think that keeping those two details very, very separate, sale of property and all the details that go along with that versus declaring a surplus are two very, very different things. And in order to start the process of going through and taking our time to do all that further research, would only be proper to do after it's declared surplus. Otherwise, we'd be getting a party vote, of course. We're not committing to even entering into any negotiations or putting on an R F P or anything. That would all be taking place after it would be declared surplus, if I understand the process correctly.
Deputy Mayor, since we're having a discussion on a motion to table, I would like to argue that there are many things I'd like to say about this before we have a vote on surplus, but I'm hesitant to say them without being in an executive session.
I would agree with that, too. Mr. Lord, he mentioned a few minutes ago, the necessity of declaring this property surplus before we can do certain things. Would you concur with the, the president's point of discussion? Is imperative that we, we do make a declaration of surplus, or can we stand alone on this and table this matter for the discussion? Which is the most appropriate and legal step we should be taking there?
Okay, we're making a distinction between discussing and action. I, we can, you can, as a council, certainly discuss it in an executive session before you declare a surplus. Discussion is one thing, but acting on it is another. You cannot do anything with the property sold, you cannot sell it or offer it for sale without declaring surplus. Is that clarified?
I think so.
No, I, the motion to table, I don't think requires a second. Can we vote on the motion to table?
I would be willing to do that. Motion has been put forward to table this matter for further discussion. I was in favor, but...
Motion included until we have an executive session.
Correct. In that motion, are there any, any further discussion? All those in favor, if they say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Okay. You will talk about your disclaimer.
And just to reiterate, my, my attempt isn't to speak against the motion at this
Second public hearing this evening is to electric, water, and wastewater, and drink lines. We'll have a public debate, open a public hearing, and conduct the first reading. No action will be taken tonight. So, who is going to use?
Hey, I can introduce this. Since we did give a signature presentation during the U H C, Port Angeles Council meeting, we do not have a presentation for the council meeting. What we're looking to, assuming, based on the briefing earlier this evening and discussions earlier this evening to proceed, first reading and open a public hearing on the recommended letter, water, stormwater, and wastewater utility retail rates ordinance and...
We're going to have, we're going to have the slideshow, so it's going to be...
Pardon?
We're not going to have a slideshow presentation tonight?
No, we, I considered the, the, the present, the slide presentation during the joint council, which is...
It's official, right. So, let me read, it's an ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington. I'm ending the electric race by making changes to chapter thirteen, point twelve of the Port Angeles... There are two other ordinances. Ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, amending the cleaning rates. I'm making changes to chapters thirteen, point four, four, thirteen, point six, three, and... I'm making changes to Chapters 13, 24, 4, 13, 26, 3, and 13, 26, 3, and the Port Angeles Municipal Code. There's one more, it's over here. Attention?
I didn't find it there.
I have a drawing here.
Something like two.
Two.
So with that, we are going to continue this matter to a public hearing on our next...
Oh, we have to open the public hearing.
Well, pardon?
We have to open the public hearing.
True, I didn't do that. We will open this public hearing. The discussion will commence. Okay, we will close the public hearing and...
We have to open the public hearing.
I did.
But you can't close it.
No, I can, I'm sorry.
You have to continue.
We need to continue until September 1st, 2015. Now, I have my stuff.
You would like comments from the public during the opening of this one?
Yeah.
He tried to open.
So basically, would folks have anything to say?
Pardon?
Right, if anybody in the audience...
Anybody who would like to make a comment about the 97th, you're welcome to do that. We held a meeting between hours of 4:30 and 5:00 at 6:00, here at the City of Meeting on this matter, with a joint meeting between the, with the City Council and the city. And I, who was going to make a comment, right, is hoping to do so. I can't see if I sit this right, I have to move. Can you hear yourself?
No.
No? All right, now, I'll try to, try to, can you hear me now? I can't see, I guess something is seen, but... Anybody else, anybody who would like to comment exactly for the... See you none? Close this.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, here, I just said there. I'm not sure if it's an honor to have a spot by none, you are not, because, pardon me. Okay. As a G, I want is the Port Angeles Department Fee Modification. Chief, are you... Okay, I knew I put someone. Trust you, Lord.
Hi, thanks. Mayor, council, thanks. What we have for you is a proposal to make an amendment to fee schedule in the Port Angeles Municipal Code for the voluntary installation of fire alarm or sprinkler systems in the city. Currently, there are a number of codes that aren't system placed that actually require people to install these systems, and when those systems are required, there's a plan review fee, there's an inspection fee, and an acceptance testing fee, that's involved. On occasion, it will happen that someone will come forward with a plan to make a modification to a building or to install a new building, and one of their considerations is whether or not to install a fire alarm system or fire sprinkler system. And it becomes an economic decision at that point, and if the code does not actually require the system, most people will opt not to install the systems just because of the cost. What we're hoping to do is provide just a minor incentive to help people make that decision and hopefully make the decision to install the system. And those systems are proven to improve safety, they're proven to, to lower insurance rates, so they're a good thing to do, and what we're hoping is that with some minor incentive by eliminating the fee for plan review or inspection, some people might opt to install these systems instead of not doing that. So again, this exemption from the fees will only apply if someone was voluntarily installing the system. If there's a code requirement to install a system, the fees will still apply. So that's what we're looking to do, and we're hoping that this is something that people will find valuable and based on the, on the life of the building, the life of the system, amortizing the loss of the fees over that time is just the concern.
So, what, how much does it make if somebody's fire fees and plan reviews versus how much does it cost us to do the review of somebody's voluntary systems?
I'm sorry?
Well, what I was saying is that currently, folks are paying for the service, so how much are they currently paying for the service for the volunteer system versus how much time does it take your staff to do the work for the voluntary system?
I like how you say my staff, I think that's great. It certainly depends on the complexity of the system. Right now, the plan review fee is anywhere between $1,500, that's total cost for the plan review and inspection as well. It's not a lot of money. And again, it depends on the complexity of the system in terms of how much time it takes. If it was a simple residential sprinkler system in a home, it literally takes less than an hour.
So it seems like, do we have a lot of these voluntary systems?
No, we don't.
No?
No. And that's what we're hoping to change. I mean, if I had no way, I would every square foot of every building in the city, I have sprinklers in that, anything that I could do would first that would be, in my time concerned, helpful. But a lot of people, it is a simple economic decision to make, and when you're, when you're looking at all the other factors that go into remodeling a building or construction of a new building, you know, a couple of, an additional $1,000 or $2,000 can make a big difference in installation of the system, but we can shave a little bit of that off, it might help somebody, it might tip the scale somewhere. Yes?
Chief, I really thank you for this. As a small business owner, and during remodels, people try and do the right thing, but frankly, it's, there's an avalanche of taxes and fees and additional costs and engineering and, you know, everything, all the costs go up, and it's just really tough on the business people with all the requirements and mandates. So here, you're making an offer for an update, a safety update to any new or expanding business, and I really appreciate that. I see this as a tax decrease, an opportunity to not pay the fee, but get the inspection and have, have the safety upgrade. So as a business person, I thank you. I appreciate your out-of-the-box creativity in trying to make our community a safer community and really understanding that any decrease in taxes or fees is appreciated by the businesses who are struggling to do the right thing. Thank you.
Chief, I think that this is a great idea, and I commend you for coming up with it. One logistical question or detail, with a commercial building that currently would require the sprinkler system, the way that the code currently stands, the customer is also required to sign up for a monitoring service and paper or telephone lines to be able to report the service and the ongoing expenses of maintaining the sprinkler system, and that's just the way it is. However, with a volunteer system, if they decide to volunteer and put in a sprinkler system, would they be required to also connect with a monitoring company and have those telephone line expenses, or could they forego some of that aspect of having a sprinkler system?
Well, the code requires that if a system is installed, it has to be installed per code. So as much as, so if I'm, so I'm hearing your question correctly, I guess the bottom line is that I can't, the code is a minimum code, and I can't waive the requirements of the code itself. So if the system is installed, it has to be installed per code, so that has to be done regardless of whether it's been done voluntarily or not. So the kind of the silly sort of, of an example would be that if you wanted to install a residential fire sprinkler system in your home, you can't just staple garden hose to the wall and put all the sprinklers in, it does all, it'll be code. I know that's a silly example, but I, frankly, I've actually had people who were willing to do that.
I'm sure you've seen it, you might have seen it.
Honestly, that is the absolute truth, I've had people who asked if they could do that or not, so, so the answer really is that it still would need to be done by code, it would still have to be monitored correctly, so all of those things apply. And once the system's installed, it's still has to be maintained per code as well.
Okay. And I suppose that there's certainly no solution to this issue at this point, but if we're going to encourage more volunteer usage, I concur 100% that it has to be installed correctly. But it seems to me, in my naivety, that the, if there's a fire, if it's installed correctly, it would go off and put the fire out without having to pay $550 a year for a monitoring system and $100, $115 every month for two required telephone lines so that the monitoring system can be hooked up and report the fire, when we really want to do is have the sprinkler system go off and put the fire out. So I don't know if there's any way to segregate all those additional costs that the customer has to incur and still have a safe system that puts fire out.
I understand that. The issue, though, is that, and although it's quite rare, if you lock your business up at 5:00 on Friday afternoon, the last thing you want to do is show up on Monday morning and have water running underneath the front door and have a sprinkler head that's been activated and flowing since Friday, have the number after 11 on Friday afternoon. And in fact, that, although it's very rare, there are things that can happen. So for instance, let's say there was a committee with a fire, the sprinkler had gone off, and it wasn't booked in the alarm system, you didn't know, it wasn't fire out, but it continues to blow water for two and a half days or longer or whatever, then it in fact could cause more damage than it said. The fact, and with the fire alarm system, the whole point of the fire alarm system being monitored is that it gets us there sooner in any fire that issues, the primary issue is time, and a fire alarm system buys the fire department time. So not only does it alert the officers that the fire could be finishing the fire, it gets us there sooner, so there's a lot of chance. So if it's not monitored, then we don't know, we don't have the opportunity to find that out unless someone happens to be driving by.
A loud bell or something?
Yeah, and that's, that's part of the issue, though, is that, you know, and, but again, I guess the answer to the question from the beginning, the code does require that, and that's not something we can waive. What has happened, though, sorry for people, but what has happened is technology's catching up, and so the two dedicated phone lines are actually being passed. One can be a voice-over internet protocol, the other one can be a radio, so there are different places that are going around that. And they're also saying that you don't need to dedicate the phone lines anymore, it could be, if that catches, so it could be the phone line at your office, but if you happen to be on the phone making a phone call and the fire alarm goes off, it captures that line and sends a alarm in, cuts your call off. So technology's catching up, and we're trying to find ways to save people money, so. We always do our best, and then we're looking for some ways to save people money, immediate end of the code as an excessive response.
From personal experience, I can vouch for that. Thanks.
I just have just one more comment. I know that right now our fire risks are increasing, and so especially the provisions of more fires because of the weather change in the dryness. And I don't know, is that something that, do we need to start revisiting our fire control, or how often does that get done? I know this is a little bit out of the discussion, but as I said, the conversation just led me to think that we currently have, yeah, the higher, our fire hazards are increasing, our risk starts increasing of fire due to the weather, I don't know whether codes, when you said, you know, the code doesn't require it, I'm thinking that maybe in time is, if the risk is higher, shouldn't we be including some of these in the code? But, so, it's just voluntary, it doesn't need it. I said, it was just a comment.
No, I'm sure.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to move to finalize the mayor to sign the attached ordinance making changes to Chapter 3.70, the Port Angeles Municipal Code Regarding Fire Department Fee. What's the name?
No, we need to have the Deputy Mayor read your...
Notice you had, and in reference to the recent laws, the ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, making changes to Chapter 3.70, under the Port Angeles Municipal Code Regarding Fire Department Fees. This will be attached to that, the motion has been made, seconded, in further discussion.
See, I would like to point out, this is a first reading, so if you want to take action on it, it certainly can.
Oh, it's our first reading. I withdraw my motion because it's the first reading, and I prefer we have, stick to our two readings, so thank you, I didn't catch that. Thank you, Mr. Lord, so I withdraw my motion as because it is a first reading, and we'll deal with this next council meeting.
An apology, sir, I don't see that moving here.
That's, that's my fault, I didn't put that in there more.
Okay, yeah, I see that.
Yeah, follow up. That was me.
The motion has been made, seconded, is the metron, because of the air and paper.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to see if we could amend the agenda to go to J1 since we have that quarter in the room, and also then follow by item I1 since we have Julie Watson in the room as well.
I would concur. So let's do the J1 targets, on these criminal justice, he proposed it.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start, and then Bill will follow up. I can go back and remember a little bit, a little over three years ago, one of my first meetings with the council subcommittee was on criminal justice, and we were discussing our criminal justice costs at the time, and I think that at least 20 of you had were in that meeting, and Deputy Mayor, and we've been grappling with those issues for quite some time. In fact, it seems like every year, both Port Angeles and County deals with the ever increasing criminal justice costs. And I think the one thing that I learned out of this is that there are a myriad of issues that contribute to those criminal justice costs, but it has been rather frustrating from a budgetary standpoint, because it's been one of those things that does in fact impact our general fund, as you can remember, we had a few years where actually impacted personnel reductions. So what I'm really pleased to bring to the council tonight, and Bill will go through it, is that a little less than a year ago, County Administrator Jim Jones came and started talking about the consolidated effort to deal with our criminal justice issues that we deal with in the city. And what I mean by that is we have a facility, basically a rock's throw from the county courthouse, and for prosecution services for prisoners, we duplicate those services. And his idea was, what happened if these ended doing those things? And actually, what we're bringing for you today is a combination of a lot of hard work by not just the county administrator, but all the senior staff in the county, and I know Judge Porter's here tonight and represents district court, and he's one of the, he's one of the major reasons that we can bring this to you tonight. And also, Bill, Lord's office has worked extremely hard on this. And what I can say is that, based on the proposal, the financial side of it, and there are other benefits that would, Bill will go over, that go over the financial side, but just on the financial side, which I pay attention to, is that there is a significant savings by consolidating these services over what we paid in, we're paid in 2015, and there's even more substantial savings in what we originally had budgeted for 2016 because of the anticipated cost increases for 2016. So with that, I know Bill has quite a bit to talk about with this, and again, I do want to say this is an incredible change in how we do business, but it has some benefits that Bill will talk about.
Well, I don't know how much I need to say about this. The council has, most of you on the council have lived through this. Uh, you know that we have had difficulties since about two thousand and nine, rising from our inability to control criminal justice costs. And almost every year, this has caused a mid-year budget conundrum for the city. As Dan said, we have lost staff positions directly because of these increasing costs. I made probably half a dozen presentations to the council. The council in the past has formed an ad hoc committee to look into this. And I think that the most that can be said is it's a very complex situation. Uh, there are lots of moving parts. We can't just point to one one thing and say, aha, that's what we need to fix. It's much more complex than that. So this has been doubling the city and our budget for about six years at least. And we have been, we have tried many things. Police department has changed. My office, my prosecuting staff has changed their procedures. Uh, and yet still we've got a lot of things that we can't control and so the costs have been increasing. Uh, we've done our best, but at the same time, it's still been a problem. And again, I don't need to, to go over that in much more detail. At the same time, as Dan said, the county has been saying for over a year that it would make sense for us to consolidate and let the county prosecutor do all of the prosecuting of misdemeanors, gross misdemeanors in the city. And also we're addressing this with Squim too. It would make more sense, yeah, if Squim would join in and the county prosecutor could prosecute all those cases in Squim, all those cases in Port Angeles and all those cases in the unincorporated area. And of course, we have never disagreed with the county on that. It does make more sense and I have, have to agree with that. That's the kind of thing that the citizens would really expect governments to do. It makes more sense, it does make more sense to have a consolidated, to have those functions consolidated at one office where they can be merged together, there's more efficiency in doing that. And there's some other intangible benefits too, besides the efficiency of having it that way. There are some things that people don't readily think about. One of those would be prosecutorial consistency throughout the county. As it is right now in the county of Squim, we've got three different jurisdictions all handling the same cases in three different ways. And so it would make sense to have the prosecution done under one consistent philosophy of the prosecutor. And then the efficiency is there. Right now, we've got three different government agencies all doing basically the same thing. It is more consistent. Um, and so the county has been bringing that idea up. We've never disagreed with the idea. What we didn't have were the numbers. Uh, we didn't know what that would do to the budget. Um, and just recently, Dan and Jim Jones have got together and they have those numbers now. And actually, uh, the result of that is pretty much what you would expect when this kind of a governmental consolidation takes place. Uh, it is good for the city. It, it is a budget benefit for the city, but it turns out also to be a benefit for the county and it is certainly a benefit for the citizens. So I would see it as a win-win-win situation. Now that we have these numbers, um, we can look at the situation and say, look, there are benefits, there are monetary benefits, but there are tangible benefits too. And it's the kind of thing that I think citizens expect of us. So now that we have this information, uh, we have discussed it, that is on staff, we've discussed it, and we are ready to make a recommendation that the council go ahead and accept the county's offer to go forward with this consolidation. Um, now, we recognize that there is an awful lot of details, little details that have to be worked out and we've got to work out the terms of the contract, things like that. But in general, the, if the, what we have from the county is enough for you to say yea or nay. You want to go ahead with this or you don't want to go ahead with it. And if you say yes, we want to go ahead with it, we accept the offer, we're going to do this, and then you should authorize Dan at the city in the same motion to go ahead and negotiate those details which have to be worked out to make it all, to implement. If you don't want to do it, then that tells us we don't have to spend any more time on this particular proposal. I will say also, um, that you need to keep in mind that this will make a significant change in the legal department. The city's legal department is all set up or staffed to handle these prosecutions now. If that were to go away, then we would lose staff and we would also lose the ability to do that function. It's not the kind of thing that you could just turn on and turn off, uh, one day over the course of the day or the week. So we would be, if you choose to accept this and make that change to the legal department, uh, we would recommend that this be a long-term arrangement because we can't dismantle that function in the legal department and then six months later turn it back on. It's just not that easy to do. So with that, I think unless you have any questions, our staff recommendation is that you will accept the county proposal and give the county kudos for, for coming forward with this. Uh, it's, there's no doubt it's a good idea, but what we didn't have until just last week were the numbers to flesh it out, to know how it would work out. And again, thank everyone at the county who was involved in this and I think that they deserve a lot of applause for putting all this together and persevering with it. So that's our recommendation. Can they go to their cell?
Well, I've been on the council for five and a half years and most of the discussion we had around how to fix this problem has been going in exactly opposite direction about how if we're going to control costs is to do everything ourselves. Uh, and I think we wisely understood that that was only going to create bigger financial problems and administrative duplication, whatever. And so we never went that direction. So I'm very supportive of this. I'm very thankful that you and the county can work together on this and I would like to ask Judge Porter how we come as a right to this point.
Uh, let me rise up the history just up there. Uh, the county came to this conclusion in the same way you guys did in, in, in any respects in that costs for the criminal justice system are going up everywhere. The city of Port Angeles is not an exception to that rule. Whether you're talking to the city council in Pullman or you talk to the city council in Seattle or Port Angeles, costs for the systems are all going up. The question is, is how can we deal with it more efficiently? And clearly from, you know, the economics perspective, uh, the size of scale certainly has an impact on how efficient you can be and how, um, how you can trim some of the costs because right now we have a multiple, we have three different prosecuting entities essentially doing the same thing. By joining these together, it's certainly going to be more efficient. What it will also do from my perspective, because I, something I wanted to explain is how district court works because a lot of people have this idea that there is a municipal court for the city of Port Angeles and there's a municipal court for the city of Squim and then there's that district court for the county. And that's not at all true. What actually happens is there is one district court. You guys contract with the district court for us to handle your cases. Okay? But it's only one court. So from my perspective, it doesn't, this contract, which I think is a very good idea, it doesn't affect how the court necessarily looks at any given case because we are one district court. We happen to handle your cases the same way. Now, a lot of other counties and a lot of other cities don't do it that way. There are a lot of cities, particularly the size of Port Angeles, that have their own standalone municipal court. Um, this, the model we had, I think, is more efficient than that, but this takes it to the next level, I think, in cooperation between the city and the county. Um, and so I think it's a, from a financial perspective, it's a good idea. From my perspective, I don't know so much in the financial end, but in the consistency and Mr. Borre made excellent point. Right now, we have one court and one judge presiding over three different jurisdictions. They're not three different courts, but there's three different prosecutorial jurisdictions. And so inevitably we'll have inconsistencies and that's something that's been a constant struggle for me is trying to bridge that gap to make sure that all of our citizens, whether they come from Port Angeles or whether they come from Squim or whether they come from the county, are all treated the same as they should be. So from my perspective, I think it's a great idea because of the consistency that it will bring to the prosecution of crimes. And I want to give Mr. McKean, Mr. Borre and a great deal of credit for what's happened here today, uh, what we're moving to. They were very instrumental in making this happen and I give them a tremendous amount of credit. So if they have any questions, they'll have to answer.
I don't have another question that I, well, maybe it is sort of a question that's properly addressed to the prosecutor attorney, not to the attorney. And that is that we have to have a prosecutor and you're going to do more prosecutions. So I'm worried that that person will be able to maybe be aligned to take on that role at the county as that city, because I hate to lose that experience and that quality.
Well, I just want to thank you, Judge Porter and, and the county administrator and our city manager and Mr. Flor. As long as I've been on county, uh, city, the city council, um, we have struggled with this issue of rising costs that were budget busters every year. We, we worked so hard to plan a budget and each year it just, our criminal justice costs went through the roof and then we have to rework this, for this on some, it's just been a struggle. And as you know, I've, you know, addressed this with you in the past. So this makes sense, this makes good sense. I didn't want to go to the cost and hiring more people, having this city municipal court. We would have to expand and expand and expand and frankly, that just wasn't a wise direction. This makes sense to me, this makes sense for the people and it makes sense to, as a council, trying to serve the people. So thank you very much. I really appreciate that this is the direction we're going in, that we're at this place now. I feel very positive moving forward about criminal justice and I haven't been able to say that in the past, so thank you very much.
I know that Dan had really been able to, when I joined the committee to, I, I, the jail cost committee, I called it, it was a bit overwhelming for myself and for Jill and for Nelson, of course, and we came, in a moment, this scratched my head, but it is unsustainable to try to account for, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars here every year. And it was, it was difficult to come to this solution and we could find it, we were looking at this one, most certainly is, it's not a good example, but the only way to get good results, bad results, is working together. So I want to commend all of you for that.
I think it's a great idea. You know, in those comments, I had a question with regards to the fee structure this year with the seven seventy-five for two thousand and sixteen coming up. Would you foresee in future years that we would continue with a single year contract or would there be opportunities to perhaps look at two or three year figures for budgeting?
I can probably answer that. Mr. Jones and I have had multiple discussions. One of the things that we both want, we all want is a long-term commitment by each other and some predictability built in also. So we will be looking at a longer term contract and we will be looking at an escalator, a reasonable escalator, so that we have predictability in the budget process. And again, like Mr. Borre said, there are a lot of details to work through, but I think that everybody really wants the same thing and I think we're all committed to working through the bugs as it come up to make this a big success for the community.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of comments as well. Um, I appreciate everybody working together to do this. I am absolutely alarmed at how much the costs have gone up. You know, it's been over three hundred percent in the last ten years. I, you know, I guess the president had made a comment how we are incarcerating more and more people and how some of those jail costs and the squiffle costs are so high. So I just, I can support everybody to see how we can reduce that. I mean, I don't think incarceration is, um, I don't know if we're doing ourselves any good doing that, but I do know that we need to figure out how to deal with those. Then the other thing that I'd like to make sure is that, you know, we have, I don't know what the parity will be between Squim and Port Angeles and the county as to number of folks per area or, and I don't know how, I'm sure that Mr. McKean will work with figuring out how much it's going to be with the taxes, you know, because we all pay county taxes as well, the city taxes and how all that works. Um, and I just wanted to ask if any of you guys saw any drawbacks on this?
Saw, I'm sorry, what?
Drawbacks? Or any, anything that you see that, hmm, maybe this is cool?
I, I can tell you that there were some, obviously there were some concerns and the biggest concern, which is no surprise, is usually any type of consolidation where you get something else, loss of control. Uh, loss of control was one of the issues that was brought up and we worked through it and I think we feel very comfortable with where we're at. And I'm talking about in this case prosecution services. But we have, we will have a, an elected official who is the county prosecutor and that elected official will be responsible for the entire county to ensure that there is consistency in how things are applied across the county. I think probably the biggest problem that an individual would have if they were inconsistent would come up. It's kind of interesting, you know, because Mr. Borre talked about prosecutorial continuity. I love that term. But basically what it means is that, you know, we have a safe way in Port Angeles, we have a safe way in Squim, and we also have a safe way between in the unincorporated county. So if you steal something from that safe way, you get treated the same no matter where you're at because the prosecutor is the same prosecutor and doesn't have a different philosophy. Or, you know, we talked about things based on budget, you know, decisions sometimes in the prosecution area were budget-based decisions because they're disciplining that amount of money. So what this does, I, I think the concerns that we had, which again, probably have been dispelled and again, we do realize that things will come up, this is new, but again, the importance is that we're committed to working through those little things that come up.
Were there any drawbacks that you see?
I think that's the one thing that's been, that I've heard come and I hear around the state, we're talking to other judges, this issue came up at the last judicial conference we, that I'm going to, whereas others, a number of other cities are doing exactly the same thing where they're consolidating. That's one of the concerns that the councils have had was we no longer have control over prosecution if we do that. And, and that's true, but I think the consistency that you get out of that far outweighs the loss of that control. But to get back to your other point that you mentioned, if you go back and look at this increase in the number of jail, the jail costs and the overall cost for prosecution, that's to some extent from incarceration, but that by no means begins to tell the whole story. Uh, the number of incarcerations have not increased significantly over the last several years. In fact, the jail population is pretty much capped at about a hundred and twenty-five. That's the number of beds they have. It'll fluctuate anywhere between eighty-five and that amount. Occasionally it'll go over that, but, and that's been fairly consistent for the last five or six years. So that does not account for the escalation in the So that does not account for the escalation in the costs you're seeing. When I first came here 17 years ago, the average cost of a jail stay was 40-some dollars. It's now 76. So it's just the cost of doing business has gone up. One of the other costs that have gone up dramatically is medical costs. Medical costs for inmates has skyrocketed. And that's a huge factor that we had almost no control over whatsoever. And to ask, and to get back to what you were saying, Mr. Collins, you do have a... The individual who actually does your prosecution now, a gentleman named Chris Vogel, does an excellent job. And it would be up to the elected prosecutor as to who he's going to hire, but I can't imagine he would not look favorably upon that. So... But I can say it's not my call.
I think it would actually help the transition to...
Absolutely.
Because the citizen of the city would see the same prosecutor.
Absolutely. I would be very surprised if that didn't happen. But again, that's the elected prosecutor call.
Well, I just wanted to thank Judge Porter for coming tonight and representing the county here. I know you're a good citizen, and I don't think we can get you back on the county commission, but...
That was a while ago.
Yes. I appreciate your service to the city of Port Angeles, so thank you.
Well, Mr. Lieutenant Mayor, I'd like to motion that we accept the county's proposal to take over all operating responsibilities for adjudication, prosecution, public defense, and jailing of all city in Port Angeles for the amount of $775,000 for 2016, and authorize the city manager to negotiate such agreements and other arrangements necessary to implement the proposed...
And here, here.
And as much as I've been forward to, I stated and seconded it. Any further discussion before we go? I was again, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, thank you. And again, there you go.
Thank you.
It's like the flag. The flag keeps moving every year. Seems like the flag was there last week, or it was over there. So Rick, thank you for your contributions to this. And this is... This is a perfectly, really good example of governments working together. I really appreciate it.
So I give a lot of credit to Jim Jones, Dan McKean, and Bill Bollard, who really have done the lion's share of...
I do too. I do too. Thank you so much.
Okay, back to item one. That's the United Way mid-year report, but soon to be retired.
So I'm very pleased to be here tonight with you and give the last report I'll give. This is the mid-year report for the 2015 funding, and you have a report in your packet. And I want to give you an update on some of the numbers and how the funds have been used. In December, you authorized $4,600... $46,350 in local government initiative funds, which less United Way's fee of $925 has been allocated to 15 agencies this year. To date, those programs have served a total of 10,500 individuals. And I expect that the second half of the year, that will be even greater. It won't just be a doubled number, because this traditionally only covers... It doesn't cover a full six months, because we never get the contract enacted quite on time. Of that number of 10,500, 4,478 were from Port Angeles residents, and an additional 2,582 were from the unincorporated areas of Port Angeles. You'll note that My Choices has not yet begun their program, because it aligns with the school year. So services for these programs have ranged from after-school programs, a summer lunch program, which mirrors the free and reduced lunch. And the Boys and Girls Club has been running that for the past couple of years. Early learning, family education, and childcare programs. Community meals at the Friendship Dinner. Respite services for family caregivers. And arts and minds program for seniors with memory disorders. U.D. program for children involved in sexual assault and other D.V. domestic violence cases. Have any of you visited the child... The new program at Healthy Families for questioning and working with families when a child has been sexually assaulted? It's a child advocacy center. And if you haven't been to visit, I recommend that you go and see it. It's a wonderful program. In the past, children were interviewed in the same jail offices that criminals were interviewed in. So this gives them an environment that is comfortable for the families, as comfortable as it can be under those circumstances. And these funds are helping to support that. Civil legal services for low-income community members. Medical, dental, and behavioral health services. Classes for people with developmental disabilities. Mediation services and training for volunteer mediators. Strengthening middle school and high school teens to make healthy choices. And services to help frail elderly and elderly community members remain in their homes as long as possible. Using nonprofit businesses in carrying out this work is one of the most efficient ways of delivering services and helping the most community members. So far this year, your investment is $5 per client within the city and $3 per client for Greater Port Angeles. In addition, many of these agencies work very closely together and refer clients between one another for different services with the goal of providing wraparound help. For example, Healthy Families may refer a client in abusive circumstances to pro bono lawyers for help with civil legal matters. They may also partner with Serenity House, help a family find childcare services and family services with First Step and Parent Line, and tell the family about the summer lunch program and Boys and Girls Club services for after-school for children. And often, these agencies confirm services with one another so that they're trying not to duplicate efforts. They don't want to launch a new program if another agency is taking care of that. Sometimes, United Way helps in that effort as well. For all these services, for over the 10,000 individuals, both within and outside of the city, I want, on behalf of them and the agencies and the individuals, I want to thank you so much for doing this. I also want to encourage you, of course, to consider continuing this and making a priority in your budget process. And I know you have huge challenges ahead. Today, we have much greater knowledge that investing early in families and children, investing in keeping elders healthy and at home, investing in healthcare services that reduces other costs. And those are costs that are shared by the entire community and by city services. So when citizens are strengthened, they are able to obtain additional education, secure family wage, jobs more easily, contribute to the tax base, even purchase a home. All of this improves the economy while reducing use of services like the emergency room, police, jails, like we just heard, courts, addiction treatment. Improves health, so that when they do end up in jail, they're not as unhealthy. In United Way marketing lingo, we say, "Reach out a hand to one, influence the condition of all." And I think this is what you do with these funds. I also want to say that over the past 10 years, it's been a joy to work with the city council. You have always been so supportive of the work that United Way does. And it's been a privilege and an honor to assist you in your work during this time. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions?
Jody, I just want to thank you so much for all your advocacy and all your hard work. And we will miss you during these reports.
Thank you. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, Council. As a United Way board member, I'd like to invite you to a farewell reception for Jody. This will take place on Monday, August 31st, in the Murrum meeting room, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. So it'll give us a chance to thank Jody for her 10 years of service, and all the amazing things that she's done for our community.
Could you repeat the time again?
3 to 5, Jody's last day, August 31st.
Jody, I want to thank you so much. You've been so helpful over the years and guiding us through this. And I, once again, I'm looking at the assortment of programs and very pleased. So you've done a wonderful job. You've really helped our community, and I thank you so much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to do so. And somebody else has turned up.
As a unique position, I am not only serving on the council, but also serving as the annual party agency director and recipient of these funds. And your excellent professional services. Say in particular, thank you for the socials that we have had. I wish you great success in the next chapter in your life.
Thank you. Thank you again.
I only have one thing to say.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Okay, that takes us to item I, two, a professional services contract for issues pertaining to the marriage.
I'll begin on that one. And it occurs to me, in reviewing this and several other items, that the city has an awful lot going on right now. And we've just got a lot of projects going on. We've got a lot of issues going on. This grows out of the landfill block situation, which, let's see, two years ago was something brand-new that just popped out of nowhere. We had no engineering plans to be doing the work out there. And then suddenly, it became a very expensive and very high-priority item because of the circumstances. The work was prosecuted, was planned to be prosecuted, over two years. And during the first year, as you recall, one of the surprises was that there was an unusual amount of asbestos in the landfill out there. Far, far, far more asbestos than had been anticipated and had been included and provided for in the contract. That was a surprise to everyone. It slowed down the work considerably. It took most of that summer for the contractor to get organized and actually began handling the asbestos in anything that resembled an efficient manner. And so, as a result of that, the contractor made a claim against the city for the delays and extra work that were caused by the asbestos in the first year. And they did that knowing that there was another year yet to come. And that claim was something in excess of $3 million. The amount varied, depending on how the contractor characterized it. But it was a substantial claim at that point. And again, that was only after the first year. So the city engineering staff reviewed the claim and believed that it was substantially overstated. The impact of that was that we had a disagreement with the contractors. The amount of money at stake was quite large. And at that point, we had another year of work left to do under the contract. And so there were several things there that would be of concern to us. To address those things, we agreed with the contractor to go through a preliminary mediation session during the winter time. And we did that. For that purpose, at that time, we hired an attorney in Seattle who specializes in these kind of construction claims. And we went through the mediation. The attorney we hired, when we stand back, who was an attorney for L.A. Powell, a well-respected firm in Seattle. He specializes in these kinds of claims. Through the mediation, we were able to resolve some of the most important issues. The most important issue was how many more years the contractor will be paying. At one point, the contractor was saying, "Well, it's better to take at least two years." At another point, the contractor was saying, "I'm not thinking that at all." And so there were significant issues that we had to resolve. With Mr. Beck's help, we did resolve. That initial retention of him was done under Dan's authority, the contractor's authority. We were successful in that first mediation, but now there's still quite a bit left to do. The work at Landville is, in fact, substantially complete. Craig, I think that's right.
The garbage is completed. We're moving now.
Okay. So actually, the contractor came back, did the work in one year. And the work hasn't been completed with regard to the asbestos in the garbage. That still leaves a large claim that's unresolved. We want to retain Mr. Beck to help us resolve that claim. He has given us a budget estimate that is on the high side. He gave us an estimate of all of the costs that he would be incurring if this went right up to the edge of litigation. We don't expect it will. And his work is subject to Dan's control. So Dan will tell him what to do if one ought to do. So we do have that control. But we would like to hire again. For that, we need the council approval. And so we are recommended, because of the expertise that he brings to the table in this particular kind of narrow situation, that the council approve the contract.
Any questions?
Just a comment. It's sad to know that we didn't come up with an agreement, but it does make sense to go back to the same guy. And I know that hopefully, your powers of persuasion, McKean, will hopefully get this thing resolved. So I appreciate the hard luck on this one.
Are there any estimates of time for completion of the negotiation?
As it stands right now, because the contractor did come back, because the contractor did finish the work to shore, our thought is that we want to have all the work done. We want to make sure that everything's done. And then this claim is the last thing that we're going to do. I don't know when that's going to be, but it will be somewhere in the next few months.
Any other questions?
I just don't have a lot of room to make the speed, so hopefully that will work out in our favor.
And like, as most attorneys would prefer like that, he has several people on his staff. They charge different amounts for their work. And he has most of the work done by those who charge lower fees for him. That's typical.
Neil, I have some degree of confidence and merits of our position in this matter.
Yes.
That you have relatives of those in the public here that would be concerned about the risks that the city may have exposure, if you will, by moving forward. Do you have some reason to believe that we have a good case and we need to...
Yes, I do. I do. And I'm not going to go into the details in a public meeting, but I do have reason to believe that it would be well worth our while to mediate this claim. And we will be able to reduce the amount that the city...
Substantial.
The claim, yeah. A substantial reduction.
All right. Any other questions before we adjourn the motion?
I was going to say, I would like to authorize the city manager to be attached professional services to the claim and to make minor modifications if necessary.
Second.
Okay, any other final comments before we... Okay, the motion is... They've accepted it. And I want to hear the motion is still to say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, we are at the council reports. Let's start over on my left there.
Just a general report that the current system is working well and working with the System Recovery Network, and they're developing a pretty solid plan for how to see ahead with ways that would be quite important for helping us recover and date XTCs, et cetera.
I'm all in that is that, I know that, hopefully, the Blackberry to the Grant to the First Federal Foundation, and so, I'm waiting tomorrow for the mural project, so we're hoping that that goes through, so we can get a beautiful mural on the transit.
A week ago Sunday, there was the First Annual Super Cup, a fabulous soccer game up at Peninsula College between City of Squim and City of Port Angeles. And while clearly the Port Angeles team was superior in kicking goals to the winning goal, our goal, we got so many balls going toward the goal, but sadly, we couldn't get in, and during, just before halftime, the Squim team got one ass to our goalie. So I have a bet with the mayor of Squim that on Thursday of this week, I'll be taking her to lunch, and I call it the lunch of shame, and I'm wearing, I will be wearing Squim's colors. I apologize, council, but a bet is a bet. So I am really looking forward to next year's Super Cup, too, and anticipate that the Squim mayor will be wearing green and white.
I also attempted that to say something in just a moment to Dan.
No report other than perhaps instead of soccer next year, we could do arm wrestling competitions or something. I'm sure we can beat the Squim City Council with that.
Yeah, I think we have a shot anyway. Well, it was an exciting game, a match against, and the balls hit almost, but did not go into the net. I think it hit the post three times.
Yeah.
Went over the net about three times by matters of inches, so we, a week ago. I'm in a kind of pressure with Sissy and others from the city. To sort of want to kind of add up, committee, if you will, for the mural project, we have a, we do have an opportunity to have at least one in front of anybody more than that. We hope the murals put on some walls in our downtown area soon. As I can say, with some degree of certainty, it's going to be a, kind of be a, bring more vibrant and colorful downtown to our attention. Really pleased to have you as part of it. I've also had, I know the pleasure is going to write a very similar topic, but I've had the opportunity to enroll with perhaps some of the rest of you, like, please cheer for Gallagher for the one in particular, and to meet with a group, there's a offshoot of the highly successful group called Revitalized Port Angeles, and they have others in their library of supporters and members organizing now a group called PA CAN, C-A-N. Challengers that are determined to do something positive and fruitful with our issues regarding substance abuse and all the issues that surround that. I believe it is on August 28th, it'll be a vigil at, again, the city field parking lot and work its way to the OMC campus with those that come out to try to support and come up with solutions and support for the, those that have trouble with drug and other substance abuse. I think it's been a wonderful effort, and I have confidence that these folks are as determined and passionate about their causes, as Leslie Robinson has been for her and many who are, Leslie and her group, and your accomplishments over the last several months. It's been, it's been, it's way cooler than the people that care so deeply about our town. Lastly, I think most of you who have come to Hope Audio have received, or will yet receive, an invitation to attend the annual 2015 version of the Squim Fest. I know that Mayor Dugiel and Dan, you're not able to attend.
I will not be.
You're not getting a invitation?
I didn't get an invitation.
So I'll probably want to make sure that that gives you... But it'll be in September.
September 14th.
I think it was the 14th through 15th, Friday said, and I think it was in the 30th.
I attended that last year, and the number of you and the people who put on a big marketing package to take advantage of reduced rates to get over to Victoria and the Squim Mall and the ribs, and it was a great opportunity. It's hard to be unable this year.
I served as judge, one of the judges. If more lives in the four-hour period than I ever had in my life, I mean, good points about that, and I assume that's a good point. So maybe Chair, if you'd care to...
I can't go down to eight.
So whatever, you don't need to decide to mention, but I know that the City of Squim as in the City of Port Angeles is during their Squim Fest and then our craft festival, our respective city fights fly in the, above the city halls in the respective communities. Totally, last year, between their attendance at the Squim Fest, our attendance at Craft Fest, which included over 2,000 folks from Greater Victoria, I think the total attendance between the two was something approaching 45,000 people. So these are the big deals. We have been in session later on and meeting, but we now have an opportunity before we close this meeting to see if we have a second public conference period. Do you wish to participate now, that maybe we're not timid?
Do we have a city managership part tonight?
I didn't see one.
Actually, we do have one item. I'll let Nathan over in R.A. pay that one out.
Okay, I'm sorry. So Nathan, it's the first person.
Council, we wanted to make you aware that this evening at 5:00 p.m., city staff issued two requests for proposals, one for marketing for 2016 and one for visitor center operation for 2016. We did have a very productive Lojentex Committee meeting, and a number of changes are made, two as RFPs from last year, but we wanted to make sure council was aware that those were out on the street. We are proceeding a lot earlier than we did last year. We would have liked to proceed earlier, but we had limited applications come in for the Lojentex Advisory Committee, and that did delay our start, but once we had the call, we did move forward as quickly as possible.
Okay. So, again, a second opportunity for anybody in the audience who would care to share a comment about everybody who would like to cover that. Well...
I'll speak.
Of course, I've been a local speaker of the Jim Creelman, the 1101 Second Street, pertaining to the problems with the A.C. bridges, which I believe is all directed directly out with the PA CAN, you know, the drug addiction, property damage and whatnot, and I believe they're all related. And so, when I addressed the city council in the past, what I did, I did a public documents request through the police department. It was done through, basically, the Pennycom request, which is, it was an extremely expensive document. When I received that, I had that forwarded over to the city manager's office, of which I verified earlier today that they are in possession of that document. That was done approximately, no problem, last year. And as I understand it, as one of the other council members asked me, and I'll leave this one, if I'm sharing it here, is the, if I understand, through the city manager's office, the document is going to be forwarded to all the city council members, and it's a very complicated document to read, but when you read it, you will see the amount of emergency services time tied up in these threats. It's not that it's happening, it's that they're just stupid threats, people saying stupid things, and people calling in, "I don't want to let you let not," but the police have to respond to it. And so, with one of the other council members that is present, one of the things I said is that, you know, I think the city's negligent in this deal. And with that, I believe that it puts a tremendous amount of burden upon the fire department as well as the police department. There's also a tremendous amount of emotional burden that goes with it for those people that have to respond to it. And so, since nothing's been done, and I understand, Sherry, that you guys are working on it, you're pushing, trying to get funding and whatnot, but you know what? Before it's done, somebody else is going up at the edge. And if you watch, it will either be a young woman, or what will happen is the winter and the holiday seasons come about, and with that, you know, there should really be a city council member there when it happens, because you know it's going to happen. I would ask that any member of the city council, and one of them said he would, I would ask that any member of the city council who are supportive of your emergency services and the general burden on the whole situation, that maybe I'd go down there and kind of, you know, see what your people are going through when they got to deal with it. Because you guys are up here in a cushy little office and all that, and it's all fun and everything, but when you see what your emergency services people are going through, you might choose to take a different approach, because it's got to be done. You know. You know, something's got to be done up there. And another approach to look at from, a lot of people don't want to look at the security fencing on the bridge as being, they see it as unattractive and whatnot, and a negative influence, but there might be a more positive thing is to kind of put something out there. There's a number of businesses within the community that specialize in modifying that type of material that's on the railings, and maybe kind of put something out there as a termkeeper proposal, and if a person looks at it the way they did fish on the fence down at the Landy Mall, there might be a way to pull something positive out of it, and at the same time prevent the damage.
That's it. Thank you to... Anybody else? Okay, we have the executive session, Neil, we have a...
That's right. We recommended that council look to executive session for 10 minutes, no actual call, and this is relating to discussion of one matter, would it lead to council or potential litigation?
Okay, with that, we want to enter into the technical section, we excuse you.